You all please rise and pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Public comment?
Yeah, I'm gonna mention this one more time, that Note 12 in this county, we all know that's BS, and I wish you'd pass a resolution memorializing the fact that you've already admitted twice during meetings on camera that it's BS and it's false. Yes, you have. Would you like me to bring the video next time and let you listen to it?
This is public comment, not a back and forth.
That's, I'm making my public comment.
Okay.
So, now that we know it's BS, again, for the third time today, I appreciate if you memorialize the fact that Dee Bergen never paid $100,000 for the ambulance, and the county board just on their own decided they didn't want to collect it. And I wish you could charge the auditor to sign a favor, to sign a false statement. That's all I got.
Thanks, John. Next.
My name is Robert Bog, Citizen Justice America, where is it Edgar County? Edgar County's the state of Illinois, Illinois is part of the United States, and we have bill of rights, so we can talk. This morning I want to talk about Jerry Griffin once again. I told you that he's lied on his resume, you folks have investigated, he knows he's lied on his resume, without question he's lied on his resume. And he continues to be supported by airport committee members, Dusty Varner Voight, and now Mr. Lorenzen. Jerry Griffin never worked for the flight school, Fort Worth's floor. What I don't understand is why the other board members haven't said a single word about this. I don't understand why Alan Zuber, who was an administrative crash worker when my kids went to school. And I always trusted Alan, thought he'd do the right thing, and I had no doubt in my mind there weren't pedophiles or sexual predators in the school. And now Alan sits in silence as he knows someone has falsified their resume and hasn't done anything. But he's not alone. Dan Brunner's a former schoolteacher, he hasn't said much. Andy Schowern that attended the same schools, hasn't said anything. And now the Marine, Lorenzen. I'm no different than the other taxpayers in Edgar County. We expect you folks to follow the rules, do the normal things, and when you interview a subject and you find out his credentials are rotten, then you discharge him. That hasn't happened. He's been at work for the county since more than a year now, and he still works there, only because the committee members continue to endorse him, and only because the board members sit in silence. I would also mention JD Kessler recently resigned. It's interesting. He resigned because he has a job in Indiana, he declares himself to be an Indiana resident, he has to have an Indiana driver's license to be employed in Indiana. But he told us here that he was an Illinois resident. So, for the last year or so, he's been on the airport advisory board rendering opinions and passing votes on issues that he never should have been doing that. There's two issues right there about the airport. I guess another one is about the December 6 meeting. Meeting was declared an illegal meeting by the state attorney generals. Nobody's returned their money yet. There's several board members were present, you know that's wrong. The taxpayers in Edgar County don't expect to pay for wrongdoing. And I'd like for you folks just to return the money. Not a lot of money, but it's wrong. And if you guys can't stand up, do the right thing, then that's the record that you stand on. That's all I've got.
Okay, anything else?
Yeah, real quick, just one thing, I think it was the last county board meeting or the one before, I gave all the board members a copy of issues with 911. If anybody has any questions on that, I'll be happy to answer it.
Thank you, Kirk.
That's all I got.
Okay. No other public comments, we'll head into levy and budget. The only thing I wanted to talk about, my intentions to seek the board to go into exec session here shortly, so that we can hear from our state's attorney on some issues, litigation, et cetera. But before that, I don't think that this is apropos for study session, and that would be the levy extension for special districts. And we had sought the state's attorney through Augie a clarification, whether Augie would want to give that to us, and we don't have to bother the state's attorney, but we were trying to determine, we had a request by the special ambulance district for an increase in their levy, and we wanted to know what, where we stood on maximums, minimums, and all that stuff, so I don't think we can discuss that in the exec session, so.
I just assumed you bothered the state's attorney, then ask me.
Well, I'm trying not to step on anybody's toes here, so.
No.
Mark, did you want to?
I haven't responded, the special service statute that the ambulance company was formed under has the pre-typical limitation that the spending would increase by 105% over the previous years, it's gotta be a public hearing. There's no reference to any, I think there was a timing of annual bidding, and I wasn't sure whether that was somebody saying it was a requirement versus, that's somebody's opinion, that's the best thing. The, if I understand correctly, again, the information that I received had referenced the Department of Revenue, which would have been under the county's code, if the county had not used a special service area. But under the county's code, creating emergency response ambulance, they're two different issues, I don't see them crossing, so that's by referendum versus the special service area way of starting the ambulance service. So, again, it's 100, it's 5%, anything over 5% increase has to have a public hearing.
And am I correct that there was a limitation the first year of 20 cents? And then thereafter, there is not a limit other than what the 5% for public hearing that were, is that correct?
I think you're correct, and that the stat, the resolution creating the special service area stated that.
Right. Okay, I just wanted to clarify, yes, Dean?
The citizens of those counties vote, or was it?
It's under the county's code, if the ambulance service was created under county's code, this was created a different way than the special service.
So, what vote?
Nobody objected.
Okay. There was a public hearing.
Okay.
And?
A certain number of people object, and you have to pull that area out of the special service area.
Right, that's what we're doing here, is to make sure everybody's clarified on, because there was some confusion where we were discussing it.
Right.
Thank you, Mark. Are there any other questions on that particular issue? Okay. I entertain a motion to go into executive session, including negotiations.
And personnel.
We need to, we need to read it out.
I would, I would make that motion go into closed session, discuss appointment, appointment, compensation.
Right.
Discipline, performance, and possible dismissal of the specific employees of public body pending legislation and negotiations.
Pending litigation.
When I say legislation?
Legislation.
Okay. Let's go legislation.
Okay, Mr. Zuber made the motion, is there a second, please?
Second.
Dan, seconds. Assume you're ready, vote, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. We will be going into exec session, gentlemen and lady. Okay, we're back, back in study session. Committee reports, Andy, since you just got sat down, we'll pick you first.
Couple things. I just got a bill for this morning, but then, I don't know, he and I went, and the heater didn't work in the third courtroom.
Yeah.
And so I called Paris Prejris, I said, "Go ahead and take a look at it, tell me what's wrong." They just had a, they just had a note taped, "Don't use this on the thermostat." So, anyway, I had to, I had to go up and look at it, and there was a, one of the air handlers that's up there, the motor had gone, all that was wrong, the whole unit worked fine, the motor had gone out, the air handling unit, but when we had the judge's chambers fixed earlier this summer, the motor was good in that, the elements were burnt out, but there was a whole replacement deal. So, they had the motor sitting there, they put it in the air handler unit, and so that's fixed now. So, it really didn't cost them anymore than just the labor to put the motor, take it, put it in there, replace the motors.
So, then we have something.
So, now I'm getting there, because they said, well, I asked the judge, the judge said, well, he goes, "Yeah, it's pretty hot in here this summer," and I said, "Well, how long has that been on?" He goes, "Oh, it's been a long time." So, anyway, we got that fixed, and basically just for the cost of labor. The roof on the courthouse, I have gotten, they've got to come back, we've got all the top, the slate and the metal roof fixed, and at this point, the roofing company has done some preliminary work and replaced some on the, on the porch, I say the porches, portico above, porches above the doors, there's flat roofs, there's four flat roofs, and they all had, downspouts have been leaking, they replaced the downspout inside the roof, but they want to come back and make some elbows and replace the downspouts from the roof on out. They're all rusted and need replaced, and I think that will take care of a lot of the areas where you have a lot of leak, visible leakage when you grow in the doors, but in fact, all three of them leaked, as far as I know. So, they want to come back, they gave me an estimate on that. I just got this on Friday and checked it on Sunday, so I need to get back with the engineering company as far as exactly what they're gonna charge to do it, they give me a price of $11,888 to replace those downspouts, and also to fix the roof where Jeff and I went up there two weeks ago, couple weeks, last week?
Yeah.
Two weeks ago, and there's porticos that are in between the doors that go around, and three of those had been grouted at some point in time, and this one remaining one had some kind of a plywood.
Plywood and tar paper.
Tar paper, and it was a mess, it was pretty, so we got up and took the tar paper off and cleaned out all of it, see what was under there, I took pictures and sent them back to the engineering company, and this is included in part of this, $11,888 is fixing that roof also. He doesn't want, they're gonna put a, like a two minutes material on that, and he explained a little to me about what he's gonna do in an email, and I said, "I just got on Friday and haven't really had a chance to talk to him and see exactly what he's gonna do."
This is in addition to what they, the original price of what they were going to do?
Yeah. The, okay, and this, something else I want to check with, and the original price was for, provide slate crew for 10 working days to accomplish much slate work, gutter repair, and so they basically quoted us for 10 days, and I think they got done in either eight or nine days. So, I think, and I had talked to Rich, who is the guy with the engineering company, with WS, WJE, and he said, "Well, we're ahead of schedule on the actual initial part of the contract, so I want to find out of this 27,450 initial contract, are we getting a break on that because they got down a couple days early? And if that's the case, then I don't, I think we should be better off on this, on the $11,888 to fix that, that portion. Like I said, I got it on Friday and haven't been able to contact him, so that's what I'm gonna look at. As soon as I find out what he said, I'll let you know where we are on that. I guess there is gonna be an additional charge to have them fabricate the elbows and fabricate the gutters and downspouts to go on.
And Andy, were you gonna talk to them about once this was?
About what, further?
Where we set.
Where we, where are we now?
Evaluation points.
Yeah. And part of that initial, and I look back this morning a little while, part of that initial evaluation that we're paying WJE for is to give us a work, what our next step is gonna be. So, I'm gonna get with Richard with WJE and have, say, "Okay, now, where are we on this? What kind of timeframe do we have to figure out stage two?" And kind of give us an idea, what stage two, what the cost is gonna be with stage two, so hopefully I'll know that by the next meeting. That's about it.
Dan?
Animal shelter, no problem, it's been very busy this year, I think I made a comment the last meeting, about 70% more dogs passing through than what was last year. Andrey is using people who are required to do community service to come out and clean cages and walk the dog, which has helped tremendously. There's some other volunteers, there's one lady, she's out there every morning, she does an excellent job. So, the budget probably is a little bit more this year, she's over budgetable more than what she probably was being in the past, and that happened with animal animals.
We figured, she's at about 70%.
70% more, yeah. Four hundred dogs compared to 250 last year or something.
Is there previous, we have volunteers in just last year and this year, and then what it holds up then, is there just more dogs?
More dogs, more dogs.
Trend expected to continue?
I shouldn't make that comment all the time, but more adult pit bulls than what used to be, I guess, was probably.
We oughta try to get some demographics on the dogs, too. I mean, it might be that your committee may want to negotiate with the city about their share of what they're doing.
I think a lot of the cities were.
Well, and I, I mean, in fairness, we need to get, I think, with Paul and sit down and maybe come up with a, we've been at five grand for the last few years, I don't want to negotiate in the media, but, I mean, at least we need to talk about our problems with them, and see if there's something that can be shared.
Yeah, we do that.
Because they may want to reject their snow removal for us.
Yeah, trade off.
Whatever, whatever.
The health department got one bid for replacing the heating cooling system, it was a bid to replace the furnace, not the type of condition, or the equipment we wanted to put in the first place. Problem, Manny was at the meeting, if we take out the old furnace, we're gonna have to check and see how much asbestos is down there. So, the company, Sigmore Engineering Interhoops, that they would get in contact with a group or company to come in and check for the asbestos, and so it may be a little more than what we intended, but we're still quite good under budget on replacing these systems, which was good. But also, we have the option of doing a little bit more, for instance, they've talked about the thermostat control would be a little bit more automatic, where one person could control it.
Right now, right now, it's a pneumatic system, is how they control it, but they said that's pretty archaic, and that would, they might be able to install some kind of a computer on it, electronic, which is what everybody has gone to at this point, has for the last 10 years or so, and would be able to control rooms a lot easier, shut, so.
It was costly and more, but still, probably would still be under budget.
Long-term economy, isn't it?
Think they came in like $111,000?
$118,000.
$118,000.
We were figuring $150,000.
Right around $150,000, so they go.
So, the other, the other option there was decided not to go with, or they?
That was the, what was it?
BNS.
BNS.
BNS out of Terre Haute, and they didn't submit a, no, they didn't submit a proposal.
They wanted to put in a system that was not on the roof, but around the outside, that's not a boiler, and they wanted to put individual units in each room, run PVC pipes to the units, which, if you want the cosmetic part, that may not be real good.
Probably the more efficient system, that's kind of what I was getting at.
But he was saying, probably save us about half on our heating and cooling, a new system they put in, so the boiler's only, probably half of these is taken.
Which, that's what.
The boiler they've got in there is about half as big as the room.
Yeah, they would take it out.
So, the savings, that's without the updated thermostat system as well, so we could have increased savings over that.
Right.
And an increased comfort level.
And we could probably give the pneumatic control to a museum and make some.
And probably the old furnace, the boiler. The only problem I had, and I don't think you ever answered the question, is when you take out the old boiler and putting in the new one, is there a timeframe where you're not gonna have any heat? So, that would not be a problem, so it might be spring before they could start working on it. Hopefully it doesn't last as long, I don't know. But we'll decide at our next meeting and what to do, health department committees, that's where we're staying.
Thank you, Dan.
You're welcome.
Carl?
As far as the courthouse, I know I've talked to the janitor two, if not three times, about that clock on the northwest corner. Still not fixed, and that's been over a year ago.
Well, it's my, and I haven't con, you go ahead.
No, I think you know it.
I know just what you know.
Okay, you go.
I think.
I mean, it's my understanding, they used to come out on, like, hook up and come out on ropes and fix that face on the clock, well, they won't do that anymore. They, they want us to get a crane up there to unhook the, like, unhook the hands. Now, when I had the roofers up there, I, we tried to get up there and we couldn't even come close to reaching it.
Get that guy over there while the rovers with the crane was there, we could get up there and they couldn't.
Wouldn't go near that high, I don't know, you'd have to get a, you're gonna have to get somebody that's willing to come out. That, that bell tower has four places where you could hook ropes and come out, and for access, and you're gonna have to get someone that's willing to come out on.
So, the people from Indianapolis that have always worked on it, they're not done doing it?
They won't do that anymore, I'm sure it's a liability thing on there.
So, we gotta find somebody else to work on.
I would just pay them, you're gonna have to, you ready to do it?
If there's four hooks, there's four heart attacks for me. Because I can't, I get up there and I took it for something.
Have a hold of.
Community service, we had those guys working at the dog shelter, we just hang them out from the top of the door.
I don't think they're, I don't think they're.
So, we've gotta find somebody that's willing to come out and do that at this point, and utilize that clock company. All you gotta do is get somebody to undo a set screw and pull the hand off, and then they can pull it in and fix it, put it back out, and get that guy to put the set screw back on.
Well, we need to get going, because it's been over a year, and we've complained and complained, and nothing's happened.
Okay, Alan?
I don't really think this time.
Mr. Lorenzen?
Tips meeting went well last week. It was absolutely great.
Just the three of us.
Yeah. So, they walked us through any regulations, I guess, probably the standards spiel, gave us this quick power plan, and then we basically turned it over to Barry, the engineer, to cover future plans, everything's on, on pace for the apron expansion and all that, money's already been allocated, please correct me if I'm saying anything that's off bounds, and fill in for me here as well. So, also, we submitted a change to some of the priorities of our list of projects out at the airfield, so priority one being for the next, next project we're gonna put money towards, we'll be basically building that, a new taxiway. I can show you the picture if you'd like to see it. So, basically, this doesn't, this blue line, this L shape doesn't exist as it stands now, and so it's one way in, one way out to the apron, so causes basically traffic jams if you have any kind of presence on the airfield. So, that was a priority for us, just to increase traffic flow and ease of use for our airfield. Additionally, and we kind of hope to basically maybe piggyback on top of that, an actual rehab of the taxiway that's in existence now, so that short parallel that we have to 927, doesn't like that's gonna be a possibility, but we can have that as a secondary priority, because we were continuing to seal it on our own with, basically, the local contractors at a pretty reasonable cost, so that can be pushed down a few more years. After that, the big one we discussed was a fence and options there, so it comes down to six-foot fence for security, or eight-foot fence for wildlife, making it deer. So, there were some concerns early on, and discussion before we went before the state of the day to say, you know what, hey, if you do have an animal problem, this is your priority. Didn't sound like that was the case, and we kind of discussed some options there, but that's kind of the up close. And so, the earliest the perimeter of fence would be fiscal year 2020, so that just gives you an idea, and then beyond that, we've got some more ideas, but those are the big, big pieces we talked about.
It may not be a complete perimeter, if there's, there used to be a wildlife study, so it might wind up being that we just have certain areas that we need to fence rather than total. So, I mean, there's all kinds of different questions, but it's hanging out there, and there's, we're trying to be responsible on the issues.
And then there was emails being fired about, about changing, you may have heard us, heard us talking about that earlier, that we needed to change our numerals on our runways, basically because of magnetic variation. Came back that someone had done the math wrong, and there was no correction, so thankfully we did not shell out the thousands of dollars required to paint the runways because somebody can't add or subtract properly. So, that's all I've got for airports.
Vacancy?
Vacancy.
Well, we have a vacancy on the airport.
Oh, yes. Sorry, so we, two things to discuss there. So, there is an ability to add two more members to the airport committee, more pressing priority would be actually replacing the member who left recently, so that's what we want to discuss now, as far as nominations, or we want to pass that to the actual meeting?
Well, the, that'll come through the meeting, and it'll come through the three airport committee members, and then they'll make a recommendation to the board.
Do we have a P and R student serving?
Yes, I talked to one individual.
Anything else?
That's all I got.
Well, the only thing I have, not the only, this budget is pretty important, you have received a copy of the levy, it looks like this, that's that one, and you'll please note that the back page, the very back page, shows you a, kind of a summary about what each fund is doing, whether there's an increase, a decrease, or it stays the same. And I think it figures out to 0.007% increase, and those increases are made up of TORT funds and community mental health. So, as far as our general fund, there is no increase. Tort immunity has actually dropped 10. County highway is virtually the same, most of the highway taxes are all the same. County retirement fund has dropped slightly. Health department, virtually the same, extension the same. Of course, I mentioned mental health, that's their request, and then some security is up slightly, and that's all based on needs. So, that is, if you would look at that, if you've got questions for our next study session, we can, we can do that. And please note on that back page also that in the center, it talks about the special services, ambulance, number one, ambulance service, so if there's any difference in how you want to treat that, please let me know. Based on our discussions at the last study session, that's what I put you. Well, as far as the general 100 budget, on page four, page three, oh, page four, there at the very top, you'll notice that the debt reduction is at 46 at this point, but it does not reflect on the very back page, the excess of revenue over expenditures of $83,000, so that would go up, but since we have adjustments to make based on hourly increases and some of the other things that we've been talking about, I haven't finalized that. Carl, I'd also like you to notice the second item there, building fund reimbursement, we've increased that to 50 from 36. So, and then the sheriff's budget, although it needs some more adjustments, reflects what I understood from the sheriff, but I understand that you guys are gonna have a further meeting, and then I will adjust the budget based upon that. So, please take it home and take a look at it. If you do have questions, just pick up the phone and call me, and I will try to address the questions, or we can deal with it at the next meeting, I'll make sure it's on the agenda, and we can deal with any concerns, or anything that I may have forgotten. That's all I have at this point. That's it. Anything else to come before the meeting this morning? Anything else to come before the meeting this morning? Entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, who?
We have two motions.
I yield.
Second.
Okay, Carl, and I think it was Carl and Mr. Brunner, then. All those in figures signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Sorry, we kept you outside.